Someone close the doors. I know it's cold in here. Commissioner Hudson is cold. And when Commissioner Hudson is cold, everybody is cold. I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Mobile County Commission, November 24, 2025. We'll begin with our invocation. And we'd like to thank Reverend Leon Bell, pastor of St. Joseph Missionary Baptist Church, for bringing our invocation. If you would come down, please stand or remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
First, I want to thank you both. It's amazing gathering of council of commissioner officials. Lord God, we pray for each of the commissioners and their various entities. We pray you continue to lead them, guide them, direction. We pray God the community is safe. We pray, God, you give clarity, a vision for the county of Mobile. We thank for this gathering today and all those who represent the various entities that have been represented today, Lord God. For your direction today, your guidance, and the Holy Spirit have his way. And just one prayer and ask it all. Amen.
Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, we have some retirees this morning. And if you're present, I'd like to ask you if you would join us down here. Bernice Bell, Office Assistant Two at the Metro Jail, 33 years and six months. Wow. Johnny D. Ledger, Deputy Sheriff, Sheriff Administration, 10 years. Gina Morris, Public Service Supervisor Two at Public Works, 25 years. Larry Nettles, Juvenile Court Officer, Youth Court Administration, 15 years and eight months. Linda J. Perry, Office Assistant Two, Mobile County Public Works, 16 years and nine months. We're gonna start with all of these years that we are losing. This, first of all, congratulations on your retirement. And thank you for all your time that you've devoted to the county. We know that every day is not necessarily a day to write home about, but we thank you for enduring those and for being here and such a part of our team. Appreciate it. This reads, "Upon your retirement, the Mobile County Commission presents this certificate to Bernice Bell and wishes to express its sincere thanks and gratitude for your 33 years and six months of dedicated service. Your wisdom and commitment to excellence have long inspired all of us and will be remembered for many years to come. We wish you good health, happiness, and continued success in your retirement." And it's signed by all three commissioners and the county administrator. And this is upon your retirement, Gina Morris, recognizing your 25 years of dedicated service, and yours reads just like this, "Thank you so much. We appreciate your time and time in, and please enjoy your retirement. And come back and see us sometime." And this is in recognition of the retirement of Brenda Tillman for your 10 years of dedicated service. Thank you for all that you've done. Thank you for the time that you've been here with us. And don't forget us. All right. So you want... The person to bring the invocation was not here, and I pressed into service my good friend, who I did not know was her son. So, thank you.
Great job.
Let's give a round of applause for all of our retirees. Do we have any speakers?
Yes, ma'am. We have eight speakers who have signed up to speak on Agenda Item 18, the Use of Space Policy. The Presiding Commissioner has requested Attorney Jay Ross address the group, everyone, for a minute or two before the speakers approach the podium, and then he may return at the end. So, Jay?
Thank you, Cherie, and thank you, commissioners. Item number 18 relates to a policy that's been asked of my office to put together that tends to, would regulate to some degree, exercise the free speech within...
Jay, move your black phone, please.
Is that better? I'm sorry. Item number 18, which I've been asked to speak about, relates to use of county public building and spaces, particularly that inside the Government Plaza, known as the atrium. This policy was asked of me and my office to put together almost a year ago. The primary focus of the policy relates to safety concerns about those who wish to exercise their First Amendment right to speak or to demonstrate within Government Plaza. The policy as drafted, and I repeat, does not address areas outside of Government Plaza, only within Government Plaza, and designates the atrium as a public place within the county to exercise First Amendment. The policy has been prepared, has been reviewed, consulting with the Commissioners, Public Affairs, and the 13th Judicial Court, our county ADA director, and First Amendment experts. Safety being the primary concern of why the policy was, is placed, and is not intended to in any way prohibit any type of speech other than what is enumerated in Section 9 of the policy. Content neutral is the intent. Outside protests are not included. You can, anybody can form outside the Government Plaza on any subject, anytime. The only restriction is what City of Mobile may regulate. And we all know we can't impair ingress and egress to the public entrances or exits on Government Plaza in the atrium. The policy is intended to only regulate time, place, and manner. Subject matter of whatever someone wants to speak about or protest about or have signs about is expressly not part of this policy. The policy is only intended to objectively and evenly enforce the policy, the rules of the city, of the County Commission. We have designated areas within Government Plaza for exercise of those people who wish to do so, taking into consideration safety and security issues. There's no other policy that dictates anything other than that. The policy does spell out 10 items that you can't do. You can't bring scooters, skateboards, bicycles, ladders, large electronics, or electrical cords into the building. No one can be uninfluenced of drugs or alcohol. It does limit what you can bring in after consultation with the 13th Judicial Circuit Police Department. There will be areas designated on certain perimeter walls. So if you want to be first come, first served, you or your group, those areas will be marked by some type of marking on the floor, and they'll be in six-by-six-foot areas. Based on what we've experienced in the last year or half, this policy should work without any interruption or impair any of the rights of those who wish to exercise their constitutional right for free speech. The policy's intended to do just that. If you want to have a gathering of 20 or more people, then it is asked and requested. If you're going to do that, you reach out to the County Public Information Officer or Cherie Broussard's office so that appropriate arrangements can be made for large crowds. Anyone who wants to come in, it's on a first-come, first-served basis. No person can reserve more than two spots for a day, and no person can reserve the same spot every day for an extended period of time. But let me reiterate, this is based on safety, public safety concerns. The total staging does not occur in the middle of the atrium in case of fire or other health or safety, public safety incident that could occur. Hopefully, none does. And anybody that wants to protest may within the designated areas within Government Plaza in the atrium. The License Commissioner, the Revenue Commissioner's office, they are public entities as we are, and they can designate space in their buildings inside if they choose to do so. We've seen the probate court do that over in Judge Irwin's court to the left of us in the probate annex area. Seems to be working. I've heard no complaints from the probate judge, past or present, in regards to that. So I'm happy to answer any questions that the commission or the public may have at the discretion of the County Commission at the end of the public statements. Thank you all.
All right.
We will begin with the speakers in order in which they signed up. The first is Mara Mandike, and she has, she's on a scooter, so I ask that they bring a microphone up to her at the top. So Mara, I'll hold, I'll hold my, my timepiece high so you can, you can see them.
Cherie?
Yes, ma'am.
Name again.
Mara Mandike.
Good morning. Do you need my address?
Yes.
Did you say? Okay. I'm Mara Mandike. I live at 2756 Brevard Drive, Mobile 36606. I'd like to thank Cherie Broussard, your Director of Public Affairs, for reaching out yesterday and clarifying this policy for us. When we first heard about it in the land yap, it did alarm a lot of people. But I appreciate that we've had the full policy now to take a look at, and it looks, looks reasonable to us, right? So by "us," I mean indivisible Mobile. I'm on the leadership team with that group, and we have been doing the protests outside Government Plaza on Government Street since February of this year, most recently October 18th. We just got back, a small group of us just got back from Washington, DC last night at about midnight. We were there exercising our First Amendment rights as well. So we want to come on home to Mobile and make sure that those rights are still intact. I will say, we get permits from the city for the parks and squares and waivers of the noise ordinance every time that we protest. We understand that the streets themselves are public property. We are the public, so we occupy those streets without, without any permits or obstruction. And we have, we have been asked by Mobile Police Department to move away from this building, get out from under the overhang. So I'll be interested to hear the commission's thoughts on that, if that, if that is correct. So we took shelter against the rain one, one time against that building, but it was, we were told that we need to be out from under that overhang and away from the building to be on, on public property. I will say, our right to free speech on, on public streets in Mobile has never been challenged, and I trust it never will be. So I just wanted to point that out. We would ask in this policy for greater clarity, so that, as, as was told to us just this morning, if the public streets, if Government Street outside of Government Plaza is not included in any way in this policy, it would be helpful to, to say that really explicitly right up front. Maybe it would be in that property classifications, in which, as Ms. Broussard, Broussard pointed out to me, this building is county-owned, the streets are city-owned. That might be a distinction that would be useful for the public. I also wonder about a greater, a clearer definition of manner, in time, place, and manner. That phrase occurs several times, so if there are going to be restrictions on, on manner, it would be helpful to know a bit more about that. And also, there are restrictions on behavior, behavior that is disruptive. We were thinking that, you know, disruptive is sometimes in the eye of the beholder, so if there could be some greater clarity around that word as well, so just the more definite definitions there. But we appreciate that when you are operating a, a public building, that these policies are necessary. I understand there hasn't been a policy, and so this is an attempt to, to make things clear, open, fair for all, and we appreciate that, and would just offer these friendly amendments. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Next speaker?
One second. I didn't give any trouble.
Call 7521, partial run it out, 36695.
Hold on.
Thank you. I was specifying...
That the content of the signs will not be, that, what, content-neutral policy. And I would like to also add my, so you're gonna add to Mara by saying a better, if you were to specifically say, "This policy excludes Government Street," the, I think that would be clearer and, and more helpful for people that are trying to plan. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next speaker signed up is Ralph McHenry. Ralph McHenry? Oh, there he is.
Cherie, name again.
Ralph McHenry.
McHenry.
McHenry. And all, all the speakers have been advised to state their name and address for the record when they begin their comments.
Hi, I'm Ralph McHenry. I live at 10,00437 Prospect Road in Irvington, Alabama, 36544. I am not an important person, in my opinion. I'm just an American. But I have a little pride. My ancestor, James McHenry, signed his constitution for this nation. So I think what y'all do is incredible. The freedom to elect our leaders and hold them responsible for what they do is important to me. This nation's history is strong, and what we do and how we regulate what we do is very important. And when one voice is silenced, that's a problem. So I hope when we're regulating, we give people the opportunity to speak as an individual and as a group, and all must be heard and represented. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Our next person signed up to speak is Ms. Sabrina Moss. Mass, I'm sorry, it looks like an O. State your name and address for the record, and watch me for timing.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
First, I would say, out of respect for the County Commission, I've known you guys many years, and I have great respect for each and every one of you sitting here, so whatever I say, don't take offense to it. So it's very concerning to me as a civil rights activist, community activist. I come from a family of activists for generations. And my husband and I are retired Air Force, and we're sixth-generation military. We fought and fight for freedoms of Americans, and we take pride in that. So when we say the Pledge of Allegiance, what do we really mean by that? It is not to take people's rights for their freedoms of speeches. And I've been in Mobile 19 years this year, coming to Government Plaza for 19 years, only missed five city council meetings in 19 years in this building. I have never seen or experienced any chaos. When there came to people speaking, protesting, putting their signs out, there's never been any chaos that I have witnessed. So I'm not sure where this is all coming from, about the safety and the disruptive behavior. This has to be coming from a place that's unknown, and I would like to know the source. So I will say this, I, I believe it's because of the ladies that are, that have been down there for three years with their signs and their, their buckets and their signs, putting their, their poster boards out or what have you. They're peaceful. They're peaceful protest. They're not impeding movement. There is no safety issue. The ambulance has been to this building during that time when they had an emergency that I witnessed and others witnessed, and they had plenty of space to come in. The ambulance, EMT, they took the patient out on a stretcher, plenty of space beyond the buckets behind and in front of. There's plenty of space. So I don't know where the safety issue is coming. Now, I don't want to say things that are not true, but I just feel like someone is offended, that they've gotten sensitive to the signs, because the signs are true. If you want to do your research, those things that they're putting there are very true. So what are we doing here? This is the United States of America. Right now, America is a turmoil and a chaos. It's no need of denying. We all know and we all see. Our rights are being stripped minute by minute, day by day. Well, some people's rights, because as long as I'm an American and I have breath in my body, I'm gonna fight for my rights to free speech, freedom to move, freedom to do whatever the Constitution says that I can do. That's not right. So why would you want to move something that's not broken? Why mess up something that's not broken? Because really, to tell you the truth, with this, it may be some chaos that is unnecessary. Those ladies have been fighting for civil rights for almost 60 years in this city, in this city, and have made changes in this city. Why, in their elderly age, take their rights at this point to speak, to, to say what's needed to be said? People come to Government Plaza every Tuesday, and they take pictures of those signs, they ask about those signs, they want to know about those signs, as they should know. Thank you. So what are we doing here? I am here to say, I am, I'm okay with changing some things, but I'm not sure about where this came from and why change it. Some things are better just left alone if it's not to be, to be broken. So, so can I have a, I need an answer about why now? Why now? And, and who's the target?
Thank you. The next person signed up to speak on this subject is Diane Martin.
I'll wait my time, just ditto what she said.
Okay. The next person signed up to speak is Andrew Gutierrez.
Thank you. I want to ditto whatever, oh, Andrea Gutierrez, 1300... Andrea, yes. Ms. Gutierrez?
Yes.
Okay. Just making sure I got that right.
Yes.
1300 East Charmaine Circle, Mobile. I want to ditto what everyone else said. I, I thank you for your service and your speech. I also want to know what prompt is this, because it doesn't make sense. I like that the title of the policy, "Other County-Owned Buildings Rather Than Spaces", much more clear, wonderful, thank you. I love that the policy, number two, clearly identifies that we have a right for protest. As Mara, Mara, sorry, indicated, some language needs more tightening. For example, throughout the document, we say, we say county government property. While the intent may be buildings, which I, you know, we all support safety, but if there's no reason for it, why are we here? Again, you know, go back to that. Throughout the document where it says county-owned property, which I'm glad is in, under the policy number two, but other areas can lead to a slippery slope. Because does that also mean county-owned property, you can designate different rules for the parks rather than buildings? So I'm concerned about the language being more specific to buildings and keeping that in for property, because that covers our spaces. Also, I certainly support threatening language. It's so subjective, though. Because if someone says something to me that is not threatening, but I perceive it as threatening, how do we clarify that under First Amendment free speech rights? Again, like harassment laws, the Supreme Court has upheld that it's perception of harassment rather than the actual, you know, so I have concerns about what that means. What does it entail? What does that, I mean, we all know, and I don't want to say the word, because it's Supreme Court upheld in movie theaters, you know the word. If we say it here, that's a violation, of course. That makes sense. It causes harm. It causes chaos. It can harm lives. But threatening words, what does that mean? If someone says something to me and I perceive it as threatening, and I respond to that threat, has that created violence? What does that mean? What are you talking about? So I think more clarity there is, is really needed. So I thank you for your time. Again, I support, why is this needed if there's never been a problem? And I also want to know who initiated this policy and what the intent of initiating this policy is, as well as tightening up language to make it much more clear. I mean, I'm not a lawyer. Talk to me like a two-year-old. I need more precise, clear... I, I need more precise clarity so that I don't feel that my rights in county-owned properties such as parks will ever, ever be suppressed in accordance with my First Amendment rights. Thank you. Thank you.
The next person signed up to speak on this topic is Sydney Johnson. Johnston.
Good morning. Sydney Johnston, seven twelve West Sparksdale Drive in Mobile. I'll just be really brief. I'll say all of us were born with certain inalienable rights in this country, and one of those rights is the right to protest. So this policy, specifically the sections six and seven, need to be reviewed again because they're in clear violation of our inalienable rights. Thank you.
The final person signed up to speak on this topic is James or Jamie Williams.
Morning. My name is James Williams. I received a copy of the current policy that's to be perhaps put in force. I just read it today, ten pages. And it has a lot of restrictions in here that I found hard to really comprehend by just looking over it as a whole. And this doesn't give me a good feeling as a citizen when I review something like this. I have a speech here that I prepared, and I will give that and take my seat. My name is James Williams. My address is twenty-five zero four Combat Street here in Mobile. I served my country in the United States Marine Corps, and I spent twenty-three years as an Alabama State Trooper. As a concerned citizen, my question is, why now? Why now is the right to protest peacefully, you assemble, be taken away and given restrictions that are not based on any merit? Why now? Why now is, my question, citizens of Mobile, is this not the people's house? If your voice can't be heard here, well, can it be heard? Why now? For example, Ms. May has been exercising her constitutional right to protest and peacefully assemble here for years without any incident. Why now is that right called into question? Why now? Why now? Why now?
No one else has signed up to speak on that topic or any other topic.
We've heard, um, a number of things. Many of them went to definitions that there seems to be a feeling of lack of clarity or ambiguity. And I hope that we have made notes of the thing, the particular things that were raised. One was that we would explicitly in the, in the policy talk about whether the overhang is included. This is, it's inside the building. I'm not sure why the city said what it said, but this is for inside the structure. So overhang was one. Clarity, um, a definition of some around manner in the time, place, and manner. Time, place, and manner is Supreme Court language, and, and that's, that's the framework. But if we are able to find definitions to, um, to add there to show what manner, to give particular definition to manner. Same thing with disruptive. If there is a definition, a generally accepted definition in First Amendment law for disruptive, we can include that. We've already said that it's content neutral. I think that was a concern that we explicitly exclude streets. Government street was the example. And then there was a question about whether or not this, when we said county-owned property, does that include parks or just buildings? And also a definition or some examples of what threatening means. Again, on any of these, anything that we include in this, in this, um, policy that appears to limit, we have got to have constitutional support for it. And so that's, some of the words that you see here are us trying to do everything we can to make sure that we don't step out of line and inadvertently limit someone's ability to protest. Let's see. The, um, the who's the target? The answer to that is there is no target. The why now, and, and our lawyer can say more about it. And I, I have to just say, I, I've been on, I was on the county legal staff a long time before I became a commissioner. This is something that should have been done, um, a long time ago. We just, we just late to the party. It's not aimed at anyone. When you have a, a structure like this, you have to anticipate. And that's what, if we had been better lawyers, we would have anticipated this forty years ago and gotten it done. And so whatever, at whatever point we did it, I guess someone would ask why now? But the why now is that we just realized with all of the activity, all the things that we have happening in this building, the fact that we are responsible for it and that we've made no provisions, it's, it's not Mr. Ross's fault. It wasn't here when he got here. So it's not on him. It's on, um, all of us and the ones who were here before us. We should have recognized and, and moved on it before. So that's my, um, that's my why now response. I can't speak for, for my colleagues, but I feel, I guess I feel it particularly because I was once on the county legal staff and know that it should have been there long before. Just like at, at all of our homes, if, if we are homeowners, we have insurance, and we have it because we anticipate something hap, might happen, and we want to make sure that we've covered. And that's, that's all that's happening here. Now, Mr. Ross, do you want to add anything?
I, can I speak?
Sure. Yes, sir. And then I wanted to make a comment.
I want to, first of all, um, Sabrina and the others, I know Sabrina, that's why I call her by first name, but the other people who came down today to express your concern. Thank you. Thank you for taking your time. I love to see when people, y'all always come to the city council meeting, Sabrina. We have a meeting down here too every week. So I, I'm, I love to see when people come down here and express their concerns with maybe some issues that we have, um, on, on our agenda, which maybe not. Maybe it's good when people don't, because maybe there is no issues on our agenda typically. But, um, and to just kind of go back to whatever Commissioner Ludgird said, why now, pretty much the same reason why now? When I got elected, I'm like, it was not a why now. It was kind of a why don't we have a, a policy to address this concern? I, I understand that, uh, there may be an incident where an ambulance has to pull up and come in this building and pick somebody up. I've been in this building with an active shooter was, when there was an active shooter here. That's chaos. It's not the same as, um, an ambulance pulling up and putting someone on a stretcher. I've never been in this building with a fire. I could imagine that it would be pretty similar to the active shooter situation when I was here. But I think that's where the safety concerns comes in. And like she said, we, we get insurance on our house for what might happen or could happen, not what's going to happen. And if we were to ever have an active shooter situation or a fire in the building, I think that's really where this is coming from. It has nothing to do with trying to suppress, uh, anyone's rights. I certainly don't want to suppress anyone's rights. But, um, I do, Jay, I'm going to ask you, um, if I can get my phone to open, two questions here. Have, have, has your office consulted with a subject matter expert dealing with the First Amendment?
Excuse me. Yes, sir. My office has consulted with a subject matter expert on the constitutionality of this. As the commission well knows, anything can be challenged and hard to predict with one percent certainty what the federal or state Supreme Court or Circuit Court would do. But we feel that we are on sound basis, and Commissioner Ludgird is correct. Many of the words that are in this are derived right from U.S. constitutional case law.
Do you, the only other question, do you feel if we, um, address these concerns that were brought up here today with some wording and definitions and, uh, the curtilage of the building being defined and taken out, do you feel like we are violating anyone's rights in your legal opinion?
It is specifically addressed only to the inside of the building, not the curtilage, not the outside. I'm, I am personally aware why Mobile PD has made those directions or instructions to one of the speakers. We could put some examples of time, place, manner. And Commissioner Hudson, again, is right. Any constitutional law is always about time, place, and manner. We could give some definition of that by illustration. I don't want to limit it to that, but we could arguably add some words for what the manner is. It's in there, but not descriptive enough, perhaps. And we could add some illustrations about what constitutes threatening behavior. But as Commissioner, you well know, that's a law enforcement decision, and sometimes they get it right and occasionally they don't get it wrong. But I can work to add some wording to be illustrative and not in any way limiting so the public has some idea of what that could mean.
Okay. Thank you. And again, thank you, uh, to the speakers who have come before us today and expressed your concerns.
I also want to say thank you to the speakers. I am so very grateful that you took the time to come today to express your opinions. Those opinions do matter. We are listening. You know, our intent here is to try to make operations of this building fair and equitable, to give people an opportunity for free speech. I promise you that I would never, and I would say this with my colleagues, we would never be a party to any, anything that would restrict the public's right to come and speak on any subject that you want to, or protest. You know, but there have to be some parameters, and we say safety. And you're, and Commissioner Ludgird's right. It should have been done a long time ago. Really, what we're doing is codifying a lot of, of what the thirteenth judicial police are enforcing now. But you have to have rules and regulations in order to make that enforcement valid. And so that, that's really the, the bottom line of what's happening. I think that there were, uh, I, thoughts today that, that were brought up that have a lot of merit. And we will certainly look into those. We'll provide additional specificity. You're right. Manner is, is a, is a nebulous word, and we need to, to, uh, define that more specifically. And we're certainly willing and ready to do that. So, uh, but this is, this is, this is what's great about government, you know? You, you have the public come and, and you can engage and talk about things that, uh, that are important, that, that matter. But free speech is paramount. Uh, I, I, I'm, I'm willing to fight for that right along with you. I promise you that, that your voice is, this is what makes America great. This is what makes our republic work, is the idea, the facts, the, the whole American experiment. And you know, I've, I've spent six nights watching the American Revolution, and, and I'll tell you what, that it brings it to home. And, uh, so thank you all for being here. Thank you for your words, your comments, your input. It matters, and we will go back and look at what we have and try to incorporate as much of that as we possibly can. So, thank you.
Thank you. I, I hope that you, those of you who share with us, um, feel heard, that we heard what you said and that we're going to go back and do what we can to, um, to refine this, to address some of the issues you raised. Thank you.
You ready? Okay.
Ready? Good morning, Commissioner. Number one, approved minutes of the regular meeting, regular meetings of August twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four, September ninth, twenty twenty-four, September twenty-third, twenty twenty-four, August fifteenth, twenty twenty-four, and October twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four, and a special meeting on October eight, twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four.
So moved.
Second.
Number two, approved list of claims.
Let me, um, excuse me. Is it appropriate for us to, for eighteen to, uh, hold over?
To do what now?
I have no objection.
To do what?
Let's take it out of order.
Eight, yeah, let's take eighteen out of order. You have a motion.
I, I, I move to approve.
Second.
Contingent. Let's see. We're, we're making that, we're making that contingent on legal approval.
Do you want to hold it over for another draft? No, we're, no, we're, uh, passing this, we're passing this. And then we'll, subject to the changes that were suggested today. And also, let me say one other thing. The policies are changed, we change policies all the time. Anybody who feels that, um, their rights are be, if they feel after this policy is put into effect in January, if you feel like your rights have been infringed, come to us. Come to any one of us, or come to me, come to Jay. And if you have a valid concern and we review it and, and feel like it's a, we can always change the policy at, uh, at, at the very next meeting. So that's one thing to keep in mind, that policies are made and they can be changed.
Let me clarify. This motion is contingent on legal approval to look, go back and look at, uh, the points that were made today and make revisions as needed.
And I second, I second that.
Uh, number two, approved list of claims.
So moved.
Second.
Number three, hold a public hearing so any citizen of the county shall be given the opportunity to be heard for or against any item related to the statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance report for the period ending October thirty-first, twenty twenty-five.
The public hearing is now open. Are there any speakers for or against? Here are none. The public hearing is now closed.
Number four, approve reappointment of Keith Wise to serve as a member of the Board of Directors of the Industrial Development Authority of Mobile County for a six-year term expiring May twenty-eighth, twenty thirty-one.
So moved.
Jay, were we not able to clarify the, um?
Item number twenty-five, Commissioner, was.
Is it a new, add-on?
On Michael Eubanks.
Okay.
And just while we're at it, on item number twenty-five, at the, at the meeting on Thursday, there was some question about whether his successor had officially or formally resigned his. his position.
Okay.
And we got with the chamber and we received an email from the gentleman that he had in fact moved out of the area and had resigned. So 25, with the help of Kerry, is properly before the commission.
Second.
Want to take that out of turn, then, 25?
Commissioners, I want to take that one out of turn. Number 25, do you want to take number 25 out of order?
It's referring to the same board, and that's fine with me.
That'll be fine. Sure.
Number 25, approve appointment of Michael Eubanks to the Board of Directors of the Industrial Development Authority of Mobile County to fill the unexpired term of former Board Director Frank Everett, ending June 23, 2030. Mr. Everett has resigned his position as of November 21, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
Number five was voted at conference. Number six, authorize advertising for bids for Michael Square License Commission restroom renovations.
So moved.
Second.
Number seven, approve amending annual appropriation contract with the Center for Living Arts Doing Business as Alabama Contemporary Art Center to provide additional funds in the amount of $21,900 from District One Commission funds for the Historic Avenue Block Party Healing Festival.
So moved.
Second.
Number eight, approve appropriation contract with Blue Slay in the amount of $8,000 from District One Education Funds for its Letters to Santa Christmas Program.
So moved.
Second.
Number nine, approve appropriation contract with Bay Area Women Coalition, Inc., in the amount of $5,000 from District One Commission Funds for its Trinity Gardens Parade to be held on February 21, 2026.
So moved.
Second.
Number 10, approve appropriation contract with Murphy High School Alumni Boosters in the amount of $6,500 from District One Education Funds to assist with the cost of operational expenses for the Murphy High School Tennis Program.
So moved.
Second.
Number 11, approve appropriation contract with the Board of School Commissioners of Mobile County in the amount of $20,000 from District One Education Funds for the auditorium lighting and sound system upgrades and student-teacher awards at Citronell High School.
So moved.
Second.
Number 12, approve agreement between Mobile County and the City of Sims for the City of Sims to take over the maintenance of Fire Tower Road from U.S. Highway 98, which is Moffett Road, to Howells Ferry Road. This is a three-year agreement that runs from December 1, 2025 through November 30, 2028.
So moved.
Number 13, request, approve request from Alabama Coastal Foundation for the sponsorship in the amount of $500 for the 12th Annual Alabama Coastal Foundation Stability Summit to be held on January 30, 2026 at the Lodge at Gulf State Park. The purpose of this event is to promote the practice of environmentally sustainable principles.
So moved.
Second.
Number 14, approve amendment number one to the supplemental agreement, a subrecipient agreement with the Dolphin Island Sea Lab Mobile Bay National Estuary Program for Mobile County USGS Stream Gauge reinstatement in the amount of $50,000.
So moved.
Second.
Number 15, approve the United States Department of the Ontario United States Geological Survey Joint Funding Agreement in the amount of $59,190 for the continued operation of the real-time discharge stations at Escataba River near Wilbur and Big Creek Lake near Seven Hills, the operation of the Real-Time Stage Station at Three Mile Creek at Fillingham Street in Mobile, and the operation of the Real-Time Stage and Water Quality Station at Bayou Sarah at Saraland during the period of October 1, 2025 through September 30, 2026. An amount of $50,000 will be reimbursed by the USGS Stream Gauge reinstatement Grant with the Mobile Bay National Estuary Program.
So moved.
Second.
Number 16, approve change order number one with Norton Contracting, Inc., Company, Inc., for Project Escataba Offsite Waterline Extension. This change order will decrease the contract amount by $18,417.20. The final contract amount will be in the will be in the total amount of $338,764.20.
So moved.
Second.
Number 17, approve memorandum of understanding with the City of Pritchard in the amount of $53,897.12 to purchase fire equipment under the Community Development Block Grant.
So moved.
Second.
Number 19, authorize advertising for a request for qualifications for the Mobile County Park Initiative to supplement the current list of engineering firms.
So moved.
Second.
Number 20, take the following action on bids.
So moved.
Second.
Number 21, approve renewal of subscription agreement with Rec Desk LLC in the amount of $3,097.50 for the annual rec desk services for the county parks.
So moved.
Second.
Number 22, approve renewal of software license agreement with SHI International Corporation in the amount of $2,307.73 for Microsoft Office LTS for public probate court.
So moved.
Second. Let me interrupt you for one second. Jay, on this bid number 124-25, I'd asked for some information on that, and I just realized it was in the approval on bids. Did you you recall the conversation?
It's annual deceased body transport transportation for Mobile County Commission to Armstead Mortuary Transit Services LLC.
Commissioner, I don't. There was some I had some questions about inspections and things of that nature of the facility that this that this LLC was operating from a residential how a residential address?
I don't recall that, but if you'll hold that one over, we'll get you the information you need for the next meeting.
But I had some questions about when I saw the bid and was reading about the bid, there's a there is a I just had some questions about if there's an inspection process and this if this company is actually qualified to do this.
Has staff, I'm sure has staff not reviewed it to?
Well, I think there's some other things that go before a mortuary board or something like that at the state level.
Mr. Mitchell knows a little bit about it, but not enough to comment. The commission hold it over for Mr. Dooherty's response.
I'll rescind my motion to approve everything but to the awarding the bid 124-25.
Yeah, until we can get some clarification on that. I just realized it was in the bids. And I second the motion.
Thank you.
Sorry, Ricky.
That's okay. Number 23, approve renewal of software agreement with SHI International Corporation in the amount of $3,075.45 for MG3 Teams AC with Dial-Out and Intra ID P1 Gov. for the period December 1, 2025 through May 31, 2026 for the probate court.
So moved.
Second.
Number 24 was voted at conference. Number 26, approve right-of-way and/or easement agreement for Track 2 on Windsor Road in the amount of $250 for Project Windsor Road Gray Drain Basin Pave and Bridge Replacements.
So moved.
Second.
Number 27, authorize acquisition of property and acceptance of right-of-way deeds and/or easements from the following property owners for the following projects.
So moved.
Second.
Number 28, approve proposed plaits, proposed plaits only of the following subdivisions: The Grove West, First Edition, District 2, Danner Road, 12 lots, and Tinsley Corner, District 3, Lancelot Drive, and Hayfield Road, 5 lots.
So moved.
Second.
Number 29, approve proposed and final plaits of the following subdivisions: Barinut Subdivision, District 3, Baird Coxwell Road, 1 lot, and MHC Hamilton Oaks Subdivision, District 3, Jeff Hamilton Road, 1 lot.
So moved.
Second.
Number 30, adopt a resolution approving a preliminary engineering right-of-way and construction agreement for an Alabama Department, Alabama Transportation Rehabilitation and Improvement Program, number 2, project with the State of Alabama acting by and through the State Alabama Department of Transportation for project intersection improvements at State Route 193 and Foul River Road, and authorize the President of the Commission to execute the resolution and agreement on behalf of Mobile County.
So moved.
Kim, what are what are we, what is this agreement about? Has it given somebody the, go ahead, I'm sorry.
It's a standard out-of-agreement that we have on all of these projects where we share funding, and it kind of it lines out the funding, but it also says who is responsible for what part and how.
Okay. So like the acquisition and of right-of-way and things of that nature and engineering and design and who's going to do what part of it?
It is.
Okay. Second.
Number 31, authorize advertising and receiving bids for Project Murray Road Gray Drain Basin Pave.
So moved.
Second.
Number 32, authorize advertising and receiving bids for Project Celestro Drainage Improvements.
So moved.
Second.
Number 33, approve assenting to the county engineer's approval of an extension of the approval for the proposed plat for one year from the previous date of approval for Maxwell Place Phase 2.
So moved.
Where's that at?
It is just north of Airport Boulevard near Snow Road.
Number 34, commission announcements and/or comments.
Oh, I just wanted to take this opportunity to wish everybody a very happy Thanksgiving. I hope that you'll be safe if you're traveling or if you have family traveling in. I certainly pray that everybody will be safe and we can all enjoy the blessings of living in Mobile County and the United States of America. So God bless everyone.
Yeah. Happy Thanksgiving, and I hope everyone enjoys their extended weekend. Jay, you got to work Friday. Everybody else can be off, but Jay. So it looks like.
I'll be sure to call you.
Looks like Eddie's already took advantage of his Thanksgiving, but I hope everybody has a great Thanksgiving and gets to spend some quality time with your families. And you know, it's a, I guess, a perfect time to say thank you to all the county staff and employees and for what you guys do throughout the year, not just for Thanksgiving, but all year long. You guys really shine. You really do a great job in the county, from our Building Maintenance Department to our Parks Department to our Public Works Department. I shouldn't have started naming departments. I don't want to leave nobody out.
Yeah, now you got to name them all.
Legal, the legal department, HR, finance. Anyway, every, 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 every person who who works for the county, I know how it can be, it can be a very cumbersome job. As everyone pretty much knows, because I tell them all the time, I worked for the county for 25 years, so I know how it feels. But anyway, thank you, guys, and I hope the little extra two days off this week is some kind of token of our appreciation for all the hard work that you do all year.
So does that mean that you're not going to text anybody?
Oh, no, that doesn't. I can already, I can tell you, I'll probably text or call Tina or Matthew before it's over. I'm sure I'll be calling Jay Ross before it's over. Kim, I'll leave you all alone. I know Daniel.
We'll take the heat for this.
Daniel, y'all will be getting a call. I'm sure there'll be some things. But if I can handle it, you know, I got some, what do y'all call that cold seal? If somebody calls in a pothole, I'll go seal it. And I said, I got a couple of bags in the back of my truck. And I have, what's it called? Yeah, cold mix. I got that, a rake and a shovel. Sometimes I just fill potholes in my district by myself. So.
We'd like a photograph.
I really do. I really do do that.
I know who to call if I can't get anybody else, then.
So I just got a text that says that Phil Benson, our former treasurer, passed last weekend. There's a memorial service this evening. Does anyone know anymore about that than I?
Commissioner, I got a text on it this morning. I forgot to mention it's from 4:00 to 6:00 at the, let me just get you, at Cottage Hill and Cody Road. There's a, it's not a church. It's from 4:00. Is that church? Let me just tell you exactly.
I think, well, he was a member of Christ United. I think his service is going to be there.
So the obituary states that. The obituary states that it, to die the 24th from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m., Cottage Hill Memorial Funeral Home at 7158 Cottage Hill Road, Graveside Service, November 25, the Alabama State Veterans Memorial Cemetery in Spanish Fork.
That's just, that's on Cottage, on the north side of Cottage Hill, just west of.
On the north side of Cottage Hill, just past, across from the Catty Corn to the Wawa. That's what I know.
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
Family died Monday. I don't know under what circumstances.
Well, thank you. You know, loss is bad anytime, but sometimes when it's tied to the holidays, that just makes it worse. So we're just going to keep his family lifted up in prayer and pray, you know, for their comfort and their strength during this typical hour, this tough hour. It's their time, this time, but all of us sitting here know that sooner or later it'll be ours. So we just remember them in prayer. There's anything else?
All right. Just to remind the commission that we have an indigent care board meeting following this meeting. And number 35, approve request for motion to adjourn until December 8, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
I'd like to call to order the November 24, 2025, indigent, Mobile County Indigent Care Board meeting.
Number one, approve the minutes of the meeting of October 27, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
Number two, accept the report from Mobile County Commission of the balance of the indigent care fund as of October 31, 2025. Funds available, $136,987.29.
So moved.
Second.
Number three, approve request for motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.